The regular meeting of the common council for the city of Hudson to order for Monday, January 13th, if you could please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Madam Clerk, the roll call.
Mayor Virchill?
Here.
District one, Morsette?
Here.
District two, Yakub?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Teewinkle?
Here.
District five, Hoggatt?
Here.
District six, Vanslo?
Here. At this point, we have Chief Jensen here, and he is going to, and I think Judge Garrity is here, to have a happy occasion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to swear in my newest officer, Matthew Cobeato and his wife, please. Yes?
Just in between the two. You ready?
Ready, go ahead.
Repeat after me. I, Matthew Cobeato.
I, Matthew Tevedo.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
For the city of Hudson Police Department.
For the city of Hudson Police Department.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge said duties.
Discharge said duties.
Of the office to the best of my ability.
Of the office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Matt comes from us, from Altoona, originally from Florida. His wife talked him into coming back up here because the weather's better. He just started on January 2nd, and they just had their first son, Damian, in October, so he's got his hands full. He's working the afternoon shifts and is up all night, so, and this is Matt and his wife.
This point in our meeting, we offer to our citizens to come forward to speak to their, address the council on any item that's not on the agenda. So is there anyone here? Why don't you come up and?
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Good.
I'm Ruth Peterson, I'm with the Hudson Hot Air Fair. Evy wrote me a script, so I'm going to read her script that she gave me. We'd like to welcome everyone to agenda 2014 Hudson Hot Air Fair, coming February 7th through the 9th. It's our 25th year, and we're celebrating the silver screen. Our favorite hot air fair events will be back, plus new movie theme activities. We've had a 25-year partnership with the city of Hudson, and we thank you for that, and for the continued support to make the hot air fair possible. Please come and share the weekend with us, February 7th, 8th, and 9th. Any questions?
No.
And here's.
25th anniversary should be a fun time.
Yes, I think it will be. And it's the movie screen, and if you're going to come to any of the events, we would like you to wear, like, your favorite movie star costumes? Or there's many other different things you can do. I did talk to some people that are going to wear sandwich signs with movie posters of their favorite movies, so that's an option too, so you can wear all your winter clothes with a sandwich sign.
Okay.
And I do have brochures, and Nancy does have some, and we do have a poster, and we'll leave this also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on that, Ruth and Evy.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion of possible action on consent items. Madam Clerk.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of December 16th, 2013, to approve claims for payment in the amount of 300, I'm sorry, $637,467.2. A detailed description is posted on the city's website and is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of four regular operators licenses contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city for the period January 14th, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. Additional information is available in the clerk's office on request.
Can you pull that one, please?
To approve two renewal license applications for secondhand jewelry dealer and secondhand article dealer licenses for the period January 14th, 2014 through December 31st, 2014, contingent on approval from the police department and payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. To approve the appointment of Marion Weber and Heidi Leeson as Democratic election inspectors contingent on approval from the Democratic Party for the January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2015 term, and that they may also serve as special registration deputies or special voting deputies at the Christian Community Home or community-based residential facilities after training has been successfully completed. And to remove Rebecca Bones steal, Annette DeWitt, Jean Becker, and Alice Ferguson from the list of Democratic election inspector nominees, and Robert Nelson from the list of Republican election inspector nominees at their request. To place on file the Hudson, North Hudson Community Access Board minutes of December 10th, 2013, the Public Works Committee minutes of January 7th, 2014, the annual report of the fire inspector compliance officer, and the quarterly investment report. That is all.
Which item, Randy, did you want pulled?
The claims, or no, the operator's license, sorry.
Okay.
Move for approval on the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Teewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes. Okay, next item then would be the operator's license.
Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the discussion and possible action to receive bids for the Buckeye Street Storm Sewer Project. Karen is here, I think everybody was here when we had the discussion. I think everyone was here. Were you listening? Or would you like to go through it again?
Briefly.
Okay. Karen?
I was half listening, sure.
Okay.
Sure. In October, we took bids for the improvements to the Buckeye Street Storm Sewer from Second Street to the river, and at that time, the numbers came in too high, and we recommended that the bids be rejected, and we rebid the project. So on January 3rd, we opened the bids again for the project with some changes. We changed the completion date, we did some reengineering for the bottom of the box culvert, and we can see we got much better bids this time with Minger Construction being the low bidder, both on the total base bid and with the award of alternate one. And the difference between alternate one and alternate two was two different ways to finish the box culvert, the floor of the box culvert, where it was not as bad as other parts. The worst part was included in the base bid, and then from, basically from the manhole at Second and First Street up, we're looking if there was a cheaper way than the concrete, but the fiber concrete came in cheaper than the polymer overlay. So our recommendation is that we award the bid to Minger Construction, the adjusted total base bid with alternate one, so the complete project is done.
And we had about $40,000. We're taking 90,000 from our stormwater utility, plus another 40. So 130 will be coming out of our stormwater utility, which the funds are there already. So that's where we're getting, because I think if you looked at the issue sheet, it was where are the funds to be determined, and that's what finance had determined where we'd get that from.
So we're saving $65,000 between the two bids, essentially?
We changed the process a little bit, but yes, it is.
Yes. We, the original bid, it was to have it done by the end of January, February, and that was just too tight, opening it up in October. And then also, what we had is, we did some different engineering on the bottom. We had a concrete floor that was three and a quarter inches thick with the wire mesh, and then we talked to the contractors, and they said it was hard to get the wire mesh down the hole into the structure because we weren't taking the manholes apart. And so what we did, that's the reason the concrete had to be three inches thick because of the wire mesh.
Okay.
So we took that wire mesh out, and we put fiber in the concrete, so we were able to go from three inches down to two inches.
Great.
Do you have a start date on this?
Yes, I talked to the contractor, and he would like to start beginning of February working on the concrete floor.
With a completion date of roughly?
The end of the 2014, somewhere around November.
Okay.
How's that going to affect our 4th of July, when we got to reroute traffic onto Fourth Street?
Well, I don't, I don't see this project affecting it, but the street reconstruction project could affect traffic on Buckeye Street. Because to do the work in the box culvert, they don't have to tear up Buckeye Street. The only place they do tear it up is in the parking lot to get down. On this project, on the street reconstruction, which is going to be discussed later, we're going to have to time that to not affect events happening in the park.
So we're going to do this with alternate one? Oh, so it's 271, not 240, okay.
Great.
It's not quite 65, but I got it.
Okay.
I'll move for approval of, to give the construction bid to Minger Construction for, with the base plus alternate one for $271,219.60.
I'll second.
There's also the 15% contingency.
Oh, yeah.
That was discussed at finance. Was it 15 or 5?
It was 5%.
5%, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
With that?
Didn't have that much, sorry.
With that added to my bid motion.
5%. Neil, was it 30, 20, 19,000?
You know, just for the numbers, might as well just increase the appropriation from the capital fund by $40,000.
Yep.
Because it's 39 and change right now.
Is that okay?
Sure, with $40,000 in contingency.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Karen. Discussion, possible action on increase for passport automatic meter system. Marty, if you want to, I think he left already, didn't he?
Yes, he had it all to an end, so he couldn't stay. But as was discussed in finance, Passport Parking has increased its merchant's fee from 15 cents a transaction to 30 cents, plus a 2.9% increase on the transaction. So basically, in a dollar transaction, the merchant fee would be 33 cents. So that would be, the city would be making 67 cents revenue, and then the merchant's fee would be pick up the rest. I wanted to bring this forward, as I said, in finances, to make sure before we expanded Passport Parking, if this was something that the city council wanted to continue looking at.
And the recommendation from finance on a 3-0 vote was not to continue. I think it was 4-0, excuse me, 4-0.
Rich made a good point, though. I mean, if there were a way to pass it on to the consumer who's the one benefiting from it.
Sure.
It's a win-win, but right now, we're even on a 50-cent transaction, we're losing 30 cents plus.
And that's what Brandon talked to me about out in the hallway before he left, is if there was a way to do that, if the city would be willing to discuss that. And I said, if you want to bring it forward, I will bring it to another council meeting.
We'd be happy to discuss it if that was a possibility, but as Rich said, I don't know why the rest of the vote should pay for everybody else's parking.
And he did say when he was leaving that if we wanted to leave the parking lot, that we did the test and, not the PIPs lot as it is, that they would keep it at the 15 cents transaction for right now.
Okay.
It seems strange to me.
Yeah, I'll say what I said at finance, that I also, I agree with finance committee's decision, because it's, like I said, it's not just that, it's also, we, we're still, it's really, we're not profiting the 65 cents or the, whatever it is, we still have to pay out for our meter people to actually tend to the meters, because they're still going to tend, because there's going to be coin transactions as well. So really, it's a loss, close to it. We won't be able to save for parking. That was the whole point of raising the meters, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts or comments on that?
Well, I know people that see it as a convenience, so, I mean, if there is a way to do it without charging us, that'd be awesome, so, you know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
He said there were 35 users?
Yes.
That's over what period of time?
It was just a month. And it was, I don't, it wasn't.
When we first started this, at the end of September, first part of October, we had our, that's when we had our biggest usage from it. As the winter months went on, and that lot didn't get as much use during the day as it normally would, you saw those numbers go down. So I think the 35 users that they saw were basically that first month and a half that we had.
So you're looking at one a day?
I wouldn't necessarily say it was advertised the best over there either. I mean, they're just little stickers on the meters, but still, you know, it did go in the paper, and, you know, but it was only one lot as well, but.
And it didn't cost the city anything, because they put up the signs, they put up the stickers, they ran the software.
It was just, it was a trial, but yeah, and like, agree with you. I mean, if we, if we end up putting a parking ramp, that's a whole different story. We got to start looking at a different type of metering anyways, because we can't, we're going to have to change the whole system.
Yeah, for discussion purposes, maybe down the road, we could do our own software. I don't know if our computer system would be able to do that.
There's nothing in ACS right now, I'm aware of, Neil, there's no parking module.
I think if he's looking at other ways to make this work so that the user absorbs the fee, I wouldn't mind leaving the stickers out till the end of March, and then if he doesn't come back with a proposal by the end of March, we clean it up and get rid of it.
Yeah. We can just postpone it, if you'd like.
Just let the stickers stay out there and let them continue with the 35 spaces until the end of March, and if he doesn't come back with a proposal, then we end it completely.
So he's going to eat the costs, or?
Apparently.
Well, I guess so.
Okay.
At least the increase. I mean, we're still bearing a cost.
We're still paying 15 cents a transition. But that's if they used a credit card.
Well, going forward, I, I'm sure we could pass on the 30 cents. My understanding of merchant credit card accounts is you cannot pass on.
We found that out when we were discussing credit cards.
The credit card companies have lobbied strong enough that.
One of the other benefits that these companies got going, though, is that they're looking at allowing you to put this on your cell phone bill instead of a credit card, so there wouldn't be any merchant fee or any transaction fee, it would just go right on your bill, and the city wouldn't see any, any cost whatsoever other than revenue.
So is that a motion, Rich? We'll wait until March and see if he comes back with a change?
I suppose that could be a motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
If that makes sense for everybody, well, you can relay that back to them then? If it passes here, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Got the Buckeye, got that, but we, we went over the.
That's in a different section.
Okay, I'm still looking, okay, I got it. All right, next item on the agenda, sorry about that, was the discussion and possible action for the 2014 community room tax subsidy. The budget's in front of you, one, we had another request from the PIPs, from Todd Gillingham, the president, asking for another $1,000. The recommendation from finance was to leave the budget as it has proposed. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Was it asking for $1,000 or another $2,000?
Another $1,000, I think it said.
Increase your.
Total of 2,000.
Total of 2,000.
Yes, it's an additional 1,000 there to get 1,000. I, for one, would be in favor of it, since this particular organization, for a very long time, has put a lot of heads in beds. They do generate a lot of revenue. A lot of our local city residents participate in many different ways, theater, there's lots of art, there's free art. I did hear a comment about cost per seat. I don't think we pay more than about $22 for an expensive ticket at the PIPs, which, if you go to a regular evening movie, it's about, you know, by the time you get done paying for popcorn and everything, it's about the same, so. There's a couple of things that the PIPs offers that you can't really get many places, so, the World at Surf, for example. It just seems like a very, very powerful, it runs 365 days a year, except for a few holidays, and it generates and helps Hudson annually, year-round. So to me, it's, it's helping sustain a very powerful force that we have in our community already, so I would be in favor of it.
I agree with John, but there's also, to let the other folks who might not have heard, there's also a surplus in the room tax of just about $50,000 from carryover, right, Neil?
Yes. 55,817.
So for the amount of heads in beds they put in this town, $1,000, I don't think is going to break us, so I'm certainly in favor of it, and it was shot down at finance, sort of.
What was the finance vote?
I thought it was, do you remember, Neil?
They didn't get a second, there was no motion.
Yeah, there was a motion to do it, and there was no second, so.
I had moved, and I'll move again, to increase for, take $1,000 from unallocated to the PIP Center for this year only.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion?
And I'll just reiterate what I said earlier, or at least part of it. Part of it comes down to, there are, there are other things in the city that you could say attract visitors. And you'll say they're not comparable, but I'll say, there's things like the soccer association, like the hockey association. There's groups, there's entities within the city that do bring tourists in.
Okay. So why don't we have them on here?
We used to.
We had them as a grant.
We used to.
As grants.
We had them as grants. They applied.
Prior to that, several years back, they were in the regular.
Okay.
Right, and there were.
But we restructured.
Yeah, we restructured, and we decided that this group should have something to say about how the funds are allocated, but we didn't want to be in the position of picking winners and losers, and so some of those groups were put into the grant program, including the PIPs, including the hockey association, including some of these other entities.
Let me ask you this, are we buying new banners? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I apologize.
No, so part of it goes back to is, so do we pick the PIPs over other groups, just because we think they do a fine job, which they do? John, I'll argue with you that $22 a ticket for some people, that may not be a big deal for you. It is a big deal for a lot of families that live in the city, and I sort of resent that because.
Actually, I'm not saying that, but it's about equal to moving a popcorn.
And there's a lot of families that don't, that can't afford to go to movies.
I certainly understand that.
So I just, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit sensitive to that, because I've known of families who've wanted to take classes at the PIPs who haven't been able to. It's not something that's in everyone's budget. The rest of these things, these are all things that can be enjoyed by everyone in the community free of charge. The PIPs is different. We, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that what they do is not worthwhile, or that they don't bring visitors to the city. I'm suggesting they do something that is not within reach to a lot of our residents.
I think the angle we're missing here is that the PIPs is probably one of the better heads and beds generators, thus helping create revenue, helping all these other programs that currently exist. So if you take, I think we're getting a good return on our investment, even at $1,000. So if you say, hey, I think if we, you know, help their marketing budget, we're probably going to continue to see them helping to support other things that go on account, so.
This is where I would rather see them in, as part of the grant program, and have other groups be able to compete, because they're not the only ones bringing visitors to town.
But at the same time, what we've allowed, and through conversations in the past that we've had at this council and finances, that we've allowed that program, the grant program, to exist for the very reason to have other identities like the hockey or the soccer come and ask for those funds.
And the grant program's still in place. Still there. Has anyone requested anything out of the grant program this year?
Last year, what the decision made last year was to move, to eliminate the grant program and to move Hot Air Fair and PIP Center up to the city tourism, to the PIPs section.
But I think we, I also recall, we kept the grant program, Lori requested we kept the grant program open. Did anybody put in an application?
There's no funds, so we didn't.
It's unfunded.
Well, we have a 3,000 on allocated, so how was it?
But the issue comes in, folks, is that really what we should be doing with these money, is giving it to organizations? You know, we have plenty of needs within our city, whether it's beautification of our parks, a, you know, we were talking about a warming house up on Wycamp Park. There's all kinds of needs that we have within our community, and I'll use the PIPs, I think they have about a million-dollar budget. I mean, so it's not, and they generate cash, and they have a capital campaign that most of us, or a lot of us, make contributions to every year voluntarily. So, you know, I, I think we need to take a hard look at where we take this money, and we have a majority of our money, 70% goes to the chamber, to attract people in here. I would venture that the hockey association has way more heads and beds than the PIP Center. I mean, by a long shot, if they, the tournaments that they have here, and the people that come over here and stay overnight, I mean. I wonder how many people actually stay overnight when they come to the PIPs, and again, I'm not, I don't have any numbers to base that off of, but I think they come here and then they go home. They'll eat and go home, but I might be wrong.
I don't really see in their letter, or maybe I missed it, but what's their rationale for wanting an extra 1,000? Because even through the grant program, we only gave them 1,000, if I recall, and Hot Air Fair used to get 2,000.
Right.
That was. I think the first, going back quite a few, I think there was like 6,000 the first couple of years.
Yeah, we've lowered it, but now they've been having 1,000 for a while, so why are they asking for another 1,000? What, what, what is that $1,000, what are they planning to use with it? You know, when people request money, ask for donations, they usually give us a reason.
I think, I think what John had said about a marketing budget, I think the last time they had put in their thing that they were going to increase the amount of marketing to the cities, I think that's what it was. Wasn't it, John?
Essentially, that's right.
What was their marketing, do you know what their marketing budget's at?
I don't happen to know that exact amount, no.
But I think that's what it was for.
It certainly, you know.
It's got to be well over 2 grand, though, to market for the whole city.
Oh, yeah.
One of my, one of my criteria for, I guess, donating out of this fund would be to organizations which really don't have a source of income or a source of revenue, so that they're really limited to what they can do without help from this type of a fund.
That's good.
And in the case of the PIPs, they do have a large source of revenue. When I look at the list that we got there, I don't see any of those organizations with sources of revenue.
Right.
And so for me, that's one of the criteria, and the PIPs doesn't fit it.
Well, and we're not taking away their $1,000, we're just looking at, do we want to give them an additional $1,000, and they've been living with $1,000 for quite some time.
I think it's been two years, maybe one.
More, three.
Okay. It hasn't been long.
It's been at least two.
Since I've been on.
Yeah. Well, no, I think it was, at one point, it was a lot more.
Yeah, it was.
I would just submit that I believe, since they're asking, they must have some reason why they would need additional funding. I don't see anybody else asking, I figured, you know, this seemed like.
I don't know, okay.
You know, I personally think it's worth it, so, you know, that's how I feel.
I don't think it's not worth it. What I'm saying is that if we were taking away it all together, I would, but to ask for additional is where I'm questioning. You know, I mean, do we need, I mean, you could look at the whole list, are we buying more banners this year for the city? Are we buying certain things where we, you know, you know, that we'll need the funds for? I mean, we spend, we spend 10,000 on fireworks, you know, we get nothing from other communities to help fund our fireworks, you know, so it's like, it's, there's lots of things that we do with these room tax dollars that benefit not just the city of Hudson, but the surrounding communities, you know? So, I mean, maybe North Hudson can give them $1,000.
Like you said, it's a discretionary fund, it seems like it's worth it to me, so, I
guess that's where it stands, yeah.
And I can tell you from years past, it's nice to be able to be asked, whereas before it was always just done.
Yep.
Yeah. No, I agree.
You're right.
And it's, it's a tornish, I'm torn with it, to be honest, because I agree, John made some good points, but if we're going to put an extra thousand somewhere, my point is, is there somewhere here that's in more need than the FIPS if we're looking at giving another thousand dollars somewhere? That's my point.
Senior citizen center.
Well, yeah, I was going to say that, too.
They don't have a million dollar budget.
That's my, that's my point. I don't mind, you know, I'm just saying, is there more of a need somewhere else if we're looking to allocate more funds somewhere?
And I'll, I'll reiterate one more time that I think a lot of this, this funds is, as long as we're using the seventy percent, and I'm not sure, do you know if, if the law changed? Did it go to seventy? I know they were talking about, right?
No, it didn't.
And if they were to increase the tax, seventy percent of the increase would-
Yeah, we're under, we have an increase.
Right, but they were going to change the law, that even the old ones would have to go up? Huh?
I think it might change-
Well, it did, but it was only applicable to municipalities that increased their tax.
Yeah, we haven't increased our tax on purpose, I think, because of that.
Okay. So, so the question I, you know, let's, let's look at utilizing any excess that we have for projects that we can't fund someplace else within the city.
Like, we've talked about replacing all of our trashcans downtown.
Yeah, for downtown, and-
I'm still looking for the warming house.
Yep.
I mean-
Well, and again, that's what I'm, I've been trying to, you know, we kind of go through this, and every year we, these always become, and I don't want to say they're not hostile, but they're, every, every organization that applies for money is a good organization. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. And, and it gets down to, if you want to say favorites, or, you know, and again, a lot of it is just, you know, what do you like? What kinds of things do each of us like? And I, I wish we could try and get away from that, and the need, and I think Rich's explanation on how, what he uses is a good one. Who needs the money and who is a main, all the other ones seem like, a lot of those folks have limited amount of dollars to fund their programs with.
And yet, the activities that, if you look at each one of them, they can be, and this is the criteria I use, they can be enjoyed by everyone in the city.
And the FIPS, to be fair, they do have that. They have a beautiful gallery, I went to an art thing Friday night, or two nights, it's totally free.
Yep.
You know, Minnesota Orchestra, there's lots of things that they, they contribute to, so.
Council is free.
They do have free stuff.
Yeah, but you could argue for Ms. Hudson, for example. I mean, they're ambassadors to the city, they represent our city, they're-
Absolutely.
You know, I mean-
Well, the big question here is, they sent us a lot of, they're asking, discussing-
There is money available, and so, is it, it's our discretion to say yes or no?
So, did you make a motion, is there a motion?
I did.
And a second?
A second to approve the budget with an increase for the FIPS, or was it?
Hundred dollars to the FIPS Center.
For this year.
An additional, an additional one thousand.
Additional thousand.
For two thousand fourteen, yeah.
Any other discussion? Does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Raise a hand, four to two, I guess. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the budget as it exists?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You did talk about the fact that toward the end of the year, we could look at, you could look at the unallocated dollars, and if there are some organizations, the senior citizen centers also come to us in the past asking for-
I think that'd be a great addition to this allocation.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Item six D, Catherine, it's discussion, possible action of renewal agreement with the Animal Humane Society of Woodbury. Just before we get to that, we've had our discussion, you can talk a little bit about the one area that you've talked about, the feral cats. Well, when we get to-
Oh, well, um-
Well, just, if you could hang on just a second. We, on February eleventh, I had a request, a wildlife biologist would like to come and speak to us and give us a different side of the story of, of the trapping and neutering of cats. And I don't know exactly what he's going to tell us, but he thinks that's not a very good program. And it's not something that the city of Hudson should be involved in. So I thought, since we had all the discussion from one side, we should get the other side. So before we make any decision on that, I think we should have that information. And that'll be February eleventh.
Tenth.
Tenth, excuse me. So now Catherine.
So, based on that, there are provisions in this new twenty-fourteen Humane Society contract that reference implementing a trap, well, not trap, but obtain, I guess, neuter and release back to the community. And one provision talks about that, that they're implementing that, and then under the Hudson's obligations, there's the obligation to cooperate with that. And I thought, since the city was just in its own discussion on whether it wants to do that type of program in the city, that those provisions would be problematic for the council at this point in time. So I called the director of animal services and said, I think the council will want to continue with the contract, but we're in the middle of this discussion, can it renew the contract minus those provisions until it's made a decision? And the answer was yes, so.
That's what I would propose that we do at this point, just because I think we left it that they needed, it was going to be a private program, and we haven't heard any more from them at this point.
Well, except to the extent that you would need to change your ordinances. And then under this agreement, you'd be in a situation where the Humane Society might say, well, here you, here's your cat back to your community, get your animal control or officer here and return the cat to the community. And so it does adopt that notion of community cats. And so, since the council hasn't made a decision, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to complete your discussion on whether to have that type of program. And I told him the ordinances at this time don't really contemplate community cats because it requires licensing of cats.
So are they gonna, will they honor the contract minus these provisions if we choose not to do the trap neutering? Or is it going to be, we'll honor it for now until you make your decision, and if you choose not to, we're not going to honor it?
No.
It's not clear. He did say, you know, it's not, he understands that it's a decision for, they seem to understand for the cities to make, and if it's the city, I think they'll listen. I can't tell you if they're going to say, look, we don't want to be, I mean, frankly, it's a philosophical also question, do they want to be euthanizing what they would consider healthy cats? So I don't know if, when they get their program implemented, they're want, they're going to want their communities to-
Well, they, they've clearly stated that they're actually not doing the trapping, that as people that turn in so-called stray cats, that they would participate if we had a trap neuter and release program.
Yep.
Which is different.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the Humane Society contract without the revisions.
Well, no, with just the-
Without the trapping and neutering changes, and then revisit those changes af- at the February tenth?
I, well, I'm not sure we're ready at that point to do that.
Okay, well, after-
Well, it sounds like we're continuing to-
After we've made a decision.
Explore and discover, really.
After we made a decision regarding trapping and neutering within the city.
As we've learned, you know, when you remove cats and nothing goes back, more cats come to replace them, we, and given the fact that we only have fifty-one licenses, two of which are my cats, we have a lot of community cats, in Hudson.
So my motion would be then to, to approve the contract minus those changes?
That's all. Right.
Sure.
If that's okay.
We'll stop it at that.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Why are we minusing the?
We don't have it yet in our city.
It sets it up as an obligation of the city, one of the provisions, to cooperate with that type of program, and the city hasn't made that decision on whether it's going to accept-
So then why would we approve this contract?
You're, we're taking, you're approving it without those provisions.
Because it's still a contract.
They needed it signed and ready to go before a certain time here.
So that we can get-
So that you can continue to take your other animals to the Humane Society and have them dealt with, yeah.
This is just our regular yearly-
This is our normal contract, minusing the cat program.
Right, exactly.
To, to bring it down a little.
Minus the neuter and release.
The cat program, yes, the neuter and release.
They'll still take stray cats.
That's what we decided to do.
Yeah, then we'll have to have communication with them and see what they say.
Basically, we need this contract because we need them to take other stray animals.
Of our-
But we haven't made a decision on changing our ordinance for the trap neuter and release, so we need to approve it minus those provisions at the time.
Correct.
You got it.
I had it. I was just reexplaining it.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight A, Public Works Committee, discussion and possible action on the installation of a streetlight on the west side of Carmichael Road by the middle school south of crosswalk. Here comes Tom Zulie to tell us all about it.
Public Works got a request from Safety Committee?
Yes.
To look at the possibility of installation of a streetlight on Carmichael Road where the walkpath comes from Grandview Drive to Carmichael. And currently, there is a light pole that's about sixty-five, seventy-five feet north of this crosswalk. I visited, visited the site a couple of times in the dark, and that crosswalk area is pretty dark.
Yes.
I certainly agree to that. So, we contacted Xcel Energy, and we've talked about different options. In fact, they did try to put a brighter lamp in at the current pole, didn't seem like it did a lot. They said they, we talked about trying to shift, just turn the arm, I guess they, because of the wires, they couldn't do that. So, we had an estimate of about seven hundred and thirty dollars to install a new pole at that location. I do have a contract, the estimate went down a little bit, the, the contract is six hundred and sixty-seven dollars to install a thirty-foot pole and put a two hundred and fifty watt Cobra head streetlight on there. I guess, one thing we could look at is, just by, tonight, actually, prior to the meeting, I stopped up there, and the current pole is right by the driveway that goes into the, is it the Oak, Oakwood Apartments?
Yep.
There's actually two driveways into that development. I'm not so sure if we actually need that pole, or we could just have a new pole installed, light put at the crosswalk. I think you're going to get some light to go, you know, carry over to that one driveway to the north.
Was that installed by the?
I think it was just when we put Carmichael Road in, so. Then at that point, we wouldn't have an additional monthly streetlight charge. We'd just move, put a new pole in, and we can do that, they can, this would be included in this cost, they can do that in the winter. And then we'd just disconnect the one light if, if we need it later on, or, you know, we certainly could have it hooked up again.
I was going to say, can you just disconnect it and see how it is?
That's what I would say, is just disconnect the, the streetlight to the north and then get this one hooked up if you care to move forward with this.
And then monitor the light situation, then with the two, with one, with that one off?
Before you take it down?
Right, before you take it down, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of taking the other light down by the driveway. I don't know if we want to do that.
No, I don't want to take it down, but-
I don't know if you want to turn it off either.
Well, I don't know if I want to turn it off either, but I'm making a motion just to approve this light. That's Tom's discretion with the other situation.
Well, I'm not-
If you drive by, it's very close, sixty, sixty feet is very close to have two streetlights.
But, but you said that you can't get any light to the crosswalk from the light at the driveway, which means you can't get any light to the driveway from the crosswalk, because it can be both ways.
There's many driveways that we don't have lights on, too. I mean, this is a safety issue with the crosswalk is why it's requested.
I understand the safety with the crosswalk, and I'm all for that one. I'm just not in favor of taking one away from the other, because that exists today and it, it's there.
We certainly, once, if we would approve this, we could certainly have them both on, and then you could see if, you know, if we can do it that way also.
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, my motion is strictly just to approve the light.
Okay.
Yeah, the installation of the light, and, and that's because I've been asking for it for about two years now, I think, and it finally came. I would get pictures in the morning from constituents saying, look at the situation, look at this crosswalk, and finally it became.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of the light.
So.
I'm in favor of the light.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight B, discussion, possible action on installation of a light at the Industrial Street mid-block between Mayor Road and Hanley Road.
This was another, this was just a single request about installation of a streetlight on industrial road. So we did a little investigation and found out that from Mayor Road to, excuse me, Hanley Road is, I think I had twelve hundred feet on the issue sheet, I just remeasured it, and it's closer to thirteen hundred feet. And there's a streetlight on each intersection, which we normally have, but this is such a long block that, you know, there never was a streetlight in the middle. That's, you know, normal street spacing for streetlights or blocks are around three hundred and fifty to four hundred feet. So I guess this is only a single request. For some reason, there was not a streetlight installed at the time that they constructed the road. I don't know if-
Where's this at, Tom?
It's on Industrial Street, in between Mayor Road and Hanley Road.
It's on Industrial Street, not on Mayor?
It's on Industrial Street.
Yeah, yeah.
In between, I'm sorry, in between Mayor and Hanley.
Yeah.
So if we'd go from Hanley north to Crestview Drive, the other streetlights are five twenty, five forty, four forty-five, forty-three, three eighty, four forty, three ninety, and four thirty-five with about a four hundred and fifty-four foot average. So six hundred and sixty-five feet is on the long side.
So each, each year, folks, what's our, Neil, I, I know you know this off the top of your head, Xcel Energy bill a month is fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars for the city of Hudson, some, yeah?
I think it's like twenty dollars a month, or maybe a little less than that per light.
Right. So, I, I don't have a problem, but every time we add a light, and it, it's every month, so it didn't, you know, and again, one or two lights doesn't matter, but we seem to, everybody wants it bright, and I think it's probably necessary. We've got to be, do a better job when we put new projects in, that they put their streetlights that the developer pays for those things on the front end.
And maybe we could do a light, just a quick light assessment to figure out, you know-
We've been, we've been-
Been doing it for years, is that what you're saying?
That's a dense area, though, I mean, there's a lot of apartments and-
That's true.
Yep.
My, my, another concern that I have is that, you know, every time, you know, we get a request, this is just one single request, I'd like to see if there are issues, safety issues, if there's issues with the police department. Currently, our operating budget has six thousand dollars to last the year.
Yep.
You know, if we would put these three lights in, you know, if we, you know, that's going to take about a third of my operating budget, and that includes light bulbs, ballast, contractual services. So, if we do the one on Carmichael Road, and maybe this one, these lights, if we would put one or two in, I think that's, we talked about Public Works, if this is enough spacing to have two more lights put in, which at that rate, you know, if we put two in, then they'd be spaced for four hundred and forty-five feet, which is comparable to the rest of the streetlights on Industrial Street.
Has there been some safety or complaints or?
I don't know, that's what I, maybe Marty can address that. I haven't heard any safety concerns, other than this lady said there was been a lot of break-ins up in that area.
No, there had, Industrial Street has seen a lot of activity, especially at night with vehicle break-ins and so forth, and with the, obviously, when you don't have enough lighting out there, criminals are going to be a lot more bold and get into vehicles and so forth, so.
So we, have we monitored out there with our police at all?
Well, we have, but, you know, we're talking at two o'clock in the morning, I might only have two cars out.
Mm-hmm.
So, and if they're going to a call, or, you know, they've got other areas in the city patrol, because it'll, it'll move in waves, but you'll always see that area will get hit, you know, on a pretty regular basis.
But is it because it's dense, or because it's missing a light? 'Cause it's really dense there.
Right, it is really dense, but I think it's also, if, there's no lights, if it's not very well lit, you know, the object, uh, somebody seeing somebody breaking into a car is gonna be less likely than in an area where it's well lit.
Okay. Any other questions? So are you requesting, Tom, one or two lights?
I'm just given the information here. And I did, and I drove up here today too, and if we would put, uh, two lights in, they'd be spaced four hundred and forty-five feet apart. Number one location, if we came down from Mayor Road, four hundred and forty-five feet, there's two driveways and a fire hydrant, so that's a good point. If we want the other four hundred and forty-five feet, we're about eight ninety. On that location, there's three driveways and a fire hydrant. So, I mean, it makes good sense that there's, you know, three driveways, we talked about the safety with the driveways, and it would also help if there were, uh, fire calls, because there's two hydrants right in those locations.
Okay, so here's a silly statement, and I'm gonna say it because it's in my head. First thing you learn with police safety and safety of your home is you keep your lights on at night, because there's less chance for intrusions, and, correct, Marty? So have, I mean, how, how is it over there at night, or is it porch lights off? I mean, have we looked at it? Because maybe we need to educate that area on keeping their, their porch lights on before we start adding streetlights, or multiple streetlights, or maybe we need to add streetlights. I'm just saying, can, you know, maybe we put flyers, maybe we spend a little money on some flyers, maybe people aware of the break-ins and to keep their porch lights on at night. I don't know, I'm just trying to find an alternative solution, if it's just that, you know, if there's been only one complaint, is my point, and we're, you know, you govern on one complaint, then you're kind of, you know, have just solutions, ideas.
So, so the twelve hundred foot distance is pretty excessive for, you, I mean, you've mentioned distances, maybe four or five hundred.
Yeah, that's a lot.
But is that the only place in the city, or just twelve hundred feet between?
Uh, this is the only one that I've been notified, there probably, you know, it's possible.
Yeah, there may be others, but it's been an area of concern.
Yep.
I would be in favor of putting these in, I mean, you can go down any number of streets in the city, and it's more than three hundred feet, it's more than four hundred feet, we're not going to solve every crime by putting in, in streetlights, but this is an area that seems like it could use a little bit more attention, so...
Are you proposing two or one, Laurie?
I'm proposing two. I'd hate to see, yeah, there's no point in putting one halfway, and you still have two six hundred foot stretches of dark.
Okay.
Tom, did you figure out with transformers, I know we talked about that at Public Works, because, you know, I'm in favor of it, of it, but not if it goes from nine hundred to three thousand, because there's no transformers? We have to shoot under driveways, or?
No, there's, I talked with, uh, XL Energy, and they felt that they could keep the cost at this estimate, although it'd be a spring project, you know, it's, uh, too hard to put underground wire in now, so they thought for both the lights would be around nine hundred dollars.
Each.
Or each.
Yes.
So eighteen hundred for both of them.
Is that a motion, Laurie?
Yeah, it is.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom, or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Okay, unfinished business, discussion, possible action for request of capital funds for the police department for video cameras for squad staff. Chief Jensen, you had a good information that you provided us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just was asked by a couple council members and the mayor to, to bring as much information for it as I possibly could. I hope I didn't bore you with all that stuff.
Well, the hundred and seventy page thing you sent me was a little much, but that's okay.
That's why I sent you the link and not the paper.
Oh, we didn't print it.
Just briefly to kind of recap, go looking over this, uh, the department's asking for about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in capital funds to purchase in-car video camera system and a body camera system for the officers. Anywhere between four to six thousand dollars per unit for in-car, you're looking at anywhere around eight hundred to a thousand for the body cameras. With the, um, storage unit, the extra server that we'd have to put on with the six terabytes of, uh, storage, we're looking somewhere to ten to twelve thousand. So that roughly, if I took the high-end costs that I have on my memo there, you'll see right around ninety-nine thousand dollars. I just rounded it up to a hundred, just for math purposes. Paperwork that I, you did get, you, you did see, uh, benefit and drawbacks, or pros and cons in regards to the systems. Basically, obviously, you're gonna see there's gonna be a lot more benefits to it than drawbacks. I think some of the most important stuff, obviously, is the cost savings that we're gonna see. Obviously, it's gonna cost us money to put in, but if we can cut down on the amount of overtime our officers are spending in court, that's a cost saving to the department and to the city. If it cuts down on citizens' complaints that we receive from time to time, an officer's having, or a supervisor's having to go and investigate those, if we've got it on video, most people aren't even going to, um, do a complaint against an officer. I think it's also beneficial in regards to, um, our officers and how they interact with the public. They're gonna know the camera system is on, it's gonna be on when they turn on the lights, so they're gonna be on their best behavior, they're gonna be more professional. The International Association Chiefs of Police found that out. They also found out that in situations where citizens during a traffic stop are becoming unruly, all of the veteran officers are real smart, will say, "Well, sir, you're on camera right now, I would really suggest you tone it down." People will tone it down, 'cause they know they're on camera. So it's an officer's safety issue as well. They also have found in some instances where officers, um, increase their productivity, obviously, because you don't, you can't have a supervisor writing with every officer when they're out on duty, but we can review their video camera systems. So we know what kind of traffic stops they're making, how they're interacting with the public, and what they're doing with their, their traffic enforcement, so there is a benefit to that. Obviously, some of the drawbacks, it costs a hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money to get up this system up and running. Technology changes, obviously, systems will change from time to time, and things improve, that might be a cost that'll, the city would have to incur as it went along with the department. Training purposes, it's gonna take us some time to get all officers up in training, especially on the body mics and how to turn them on and so forth, um, and how to use the camera systems, how to download them, and so forth. Maintaining the videos, obviously, we're gonna have to have a records clerk, that's gonna have to be maintaining these records. We only have to keep them for a hundred and twenty days unless they're needed for evidence in a case, otherwise, we can dump them after that, so we won't be hanging these things on for seven years at a time. And then, uh, one of the other things is officer buy-in, making sure that the officers are aware, hey, this is a camera system, we're using it, we're not using it for punishment, we're using it for purposes of, obviously, evidentiary value, uh, for court cases and liability protection for the city. Lawsuits and so forth coming out of these, um, I think there was a couple examples in the IACP paper, I think one of the, the biggest ones I saw was the officer that was involved in a traffic accident, multimillion dollar lawsuit, in regards to, uh, an accident where he went through an intersection, red lights and siren, was T-boned by another car, and five independent witnesses said that the officer had gone in against the red light, it was in violation, when the camera in the vehicle behind him that was following him clearly showed that the officer had the green light. So, obviously, it's an independent witness, it can be there, it's not biased in any set, set of the mind or anything like that, so it's gonna be your silent witness, and it will be your best evidence when you go to court. There is some emails that I've included, uh, from chiefs of police that I asked, uh, when I went to the Wisconsin Chiefs of Police Association website, um, they're all in favor of it, they think it's a great system. I talked to our city attorney in regards to what he thought, and he obviously put an email in there regards to, he thought it would save us in time for court preparations, obviously, if you don't have to prepare for DWI, 'cause you've got the video, and the judge is gonna see it, you're not gonna be spending a lot of time in court. So he was looking at possible cost savings there as well. So, I, these systems, I think, are the, uh, the future of our police department, I think it's gonna be something that'll be beneficial, obviously, obviously, it's gotta get past the cost.
Questions?
Neil?
Yes?
Um, we went, we took this up at Public Safety, it passed three zero in Public Safety. Marty and I have been discussing this for a long time, and, um, I know one of the concerns has been, you know, the time it took for the, for, uh, the training to be complete on the, with the computers, when we put the computers in the car, and I, something I had thought of and hadn't brought up to you yet, I just thought of it, is maybe we could put a timeframe for the officers to get trained on these, so it doesn't get legged, you know, if these get approved.
Right.
And then it's up to you what you would do if they don't meet that. But, um, I think it's important, I think it's, I think we've considered it for the last, since I've been on council, it's been considered and rejected, and I think now's the time where we need to step up to the plate and, and, and get these cars outfitted with these, and as long, as well as the lapels. I was looking at the past capital budgets, the capital budgets, Neil gave me a spreadsheet, I mean, the police have had very little requests come out of the capital outlay budget since two thousand and eleven, I have the budgets. This is, this is the largest request that would get granted for them since before two thousand and eleven, so it's not, it's not as if we've been, um, overcompensating the department through those, through the capital outlays. So I, I would really like to see us take a, a, I'd like everyone to really think hard about this before they make their vote, because it's very, I think it's very important for the safety of our officers, for the safety of the community, and, and just to help cost savings. I believe it will save costs, and I think it will help. And I think maybe with those cost savings, we might be able to find a way to, if we do need to upgrade, to upgrade through those cost savings, if, when the time comes, possibly.
When I initially heard about this, I was against it, I, I didn't wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars, I think it is a lot of money to be spent, and I wasn't in favor of it, but after discussing a number of the issues involved, and, and, and hearing Marty talk about the reduction in overtime, uh, and also realizing that the city of Hudson is changing, and that we're inviting more and more visitors into the city, we're becoming a bigger, uh, a bigger center of activity, and so the number of incidents that are going to occur in our city are only going to increase, and those incidents are gonna get more serious, they're not gonna get less serious, they're gonna get more serious, and I think we need to upgrade our technology to be in a position to handle those. I like the fact that it protects the city from potential liability litigation.
Yes.
I think that's a big one, all you need is one liability litigation, and you've saved your hundred thousand dollars right in that instance. I like the safety for, of the officers, and I also like the safety of the citizens, because if the, if, if, if a stoppage is on video, the citizen's gonna be treated very well, and also the officer's protected in case they get into a violent situation, and, and the video will protect them.
And if they're not protected well, we can, Marty has opportunity to reprimand.
Yeah, so I, I, I can say I was against it originally, but I am no longer against it, and I, I certainly think we need to do this, it's time to do it, to upgrade this, to upgrade the department.
Marty, I have one question on the drawbacks.
Okay.
Officer buy-in, will they have an option? I mean, can they turn the switch off, or?
When we, we're gonna have to put, update our policy, we currently have a video mobile policy, 'cause at one time, we did have, um, two cameras in our cars, but that was probably fifteen years ago. They will not have an opportunity to turn those cameras off. The only thing would be with the body mics, remembering to turn it on and turn it off, but once you turn on, the in-car cameras are set up, once you turn on the lights, those cameras come on. And they also have what they call a pre-recording portion in there, so even before you turn on the lights, they're recording up, up to a minute ahead of time, so that when you turn on the lights, it will save that portion of the video, so if you're sitting at an intersection and you see somebody blow the red light, it's caught on camera already, you don't have to worry about getting that portion of it. So, the officer buy-in is, is to get them to trust the system is there, not to, you know, punish them, or to be looking over their shoulder, it's to prevent, you know, protect them as much as it is to protect the city.
Okay, I've had a, many, a few officers contact me in the past years, asking for these as well, though, so I don't, I would hope that it's not gonna be as difficult. I mean, they, they, you know, they've made suggestions that we don't support things that they want, and if we support this, I would hope that they would follow through with the buy-in. I mean, I think if we're gonna change policies, and, you know, that's probably gonna have to come to safety, I'm not sure if it does or doesn't, to change some of these policies, some of these policies.
No, this would be a procedural...
Okay, so it might be something we would consider, you would wanna consider too, if they don't buy in, how that...
Right. And I think the, the officers that aren't gonna be, the, the buy-ins are the ones that we have seen troubles with in the past, that we've had, you know, issues with in regards to performance and so forth. They're the ones that are gonna be looking at it as being, you know, this is another way to spy on me. Those that are doing their jobs on a daily basis, that go out there and give their best effort, they're not even gonna worry about this system. They're, in fact, like Mary was saying, I've got several officers in this department have been dying to get these camera systems, especially those that work on the night shifts that do a lot of OWI enforcement.
Yeah. So, um...
Go ahead.
Sorry. Chief, how many complaints do you think we have against officers in a year? And how are they typically handled?
I would say, on average, we probably have about three a year that would come in. Um, and usually what will happen is, is that the, the citizen will come in, and the first step of the process is to sit down with that person, either myself or have one of my investigators sit in, and see if it's something that can be handled informally, was it a misunderstanding or so forth. But if it turns out to be, they wanna file a, file a formal complaint against the officer, we give them a form to fill out in regards to it, have them write it down. I then assign it to a supervisor, who then will do an investigation, and they'll have to talk to the person, talk to any witnesses, then they will talk to the officer and find out their side of the story, then they'll present all the evidence to me, and then I sit down and have to make a decision in regards to what happened with this case. And it's just like any other investigation an officer would have to do, you know, it's gonna take time and energy for them to make the phone calls, do the interview, write the report, and so forth. So, if you've got it on video, and a person comes in and says, "Well, I want, your officer was rude and condescending and everything else," I say, "Well, we got it on video, let's take a look at it." And the person goes, "Well, no, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna file a complaint, I don't wanna do that anymore." 'Cause most of the chiefs that I've talked to have said, a lot of people that wanna file complaints against officers are because they feel that if they do, they might be able to get out of the ticket. Not saying that's the case in all cases, but if it deters frivolous complaints, it's gonna save us time and money.
Sure, just...
There is also a process with the Police and Fire Commission as well, depending if the individual isn't satisfied with what, for example, Marty says, that they can go to Police and Fire Commission as well.
And in all honesty, you know, I don't wanna put Tom on the spot, but, you know, we have complaints against other workers in the city as well, too. You know, the information, and I appreciate all the information you put together here. One big thing that I kept running across is, the main thing it does is it reduces complaints against officers. And I've read, you know, up to eighty-eight percent reduction in complaints against officers, so at that rate, we'll have two next year instead of three, but, um, and it, it keeps tabs on officers.
It, it, basically is another supervisor.
We get an idea of their behavior, and, and you said it increases professionalism. So, those are important things, but I'm looking at, it's not the hundred thousand now, it's upgrades in the future, it's additional IT support. I was a big supporter of the computers in the cars, and they've proven to be useful, but we still have officers coming in to write reports in the station, and now up at the middle school. I don't, is it going yet?
Not yet, but, so...
Okay. So, I mean, sometimes we invest large sums of money in technology that we think will save a great deal in the long run, and a lot of times, it ends up creating more operating expenses going forward. So I just would caution the council that, you know, it's a hundred thousand now, and then what is it for upgrades, and what is it for additional servers, IT help, et cetera, et cetera. Some other downsides, and just, 'cause I think it's important, we're, we don't think that it's gonna be a, you know, fix everything. One report said it can actually decrease officers', um, ability to recall details to, you know, instead of, in other words, instead of writing a report and using the film to confirm that report, they rely on the video to record what happened. So now you're looking at, you're witnessing the event, you're recording it, and then you're using it as, so it can be used sort of as a crutch. Another downside, they said sometimes officers will be so concerned about the position of the camera, what's getting caught, safety can, that, safety can take a second or a backseat, you know, to making sure that everything is okay for the video. So, I mean, it's, I didn't read anywhere where it saved lives. It helps with prosecution, and you said it could save up to sixty-eight hundred a year in court costs. Sixty-eight hundred a year, you're looking at sixty years, you know, before it'll save overtime, before it'll pay back the initial investment. So, you know, sometimes I think we spend large sums of money, and we think something is going to solve everything, and it, it doesn't. We're gonna be setting the department up for future expenses, and you guys need to be ready to bear those costs, because they're not gonna go away, once we get the cameras.
We're all aware of a particular case that was going on a couple years ago with the city, and how much time we spent getting, uh, with open records requests, and with our police being called out multiple times to a certain area of the city. If we had lapel cameras on our officers at that time, that case would've been dead in the water in a week. You know, we spent thousands and thousands of dollars on that, but one specific case, so even if it's two or three complaints, some of those complaints have cost us twenty thousand dollars, you know? So we have to, we, I mean, there's some situations where things like that would've gotten squashed, reputations would've been, um, protected more, I mean, a lot of, a lot of reputations were ripped on in some of those emails that were, were, uh, sent out. There's also cases where, you know, I, and then I, I made it a little, I made the comment on safety, I'll make it again, there was a situation that, that I could've used those lapel cameras at one point. So, I mean, I think that, um, the video footage, I, I get what you're saying about certain things, but the combination of the camera in the car and the lapel cameras is, is different than just having the camera in the car and positioning your car a certain way, 'cause that lapel camera's with you, and that's going into the scene with you. I wouldn't have been, I was not in favor of just the cameras in the car, and I was, it had to be either a combination or just the lapels, when Marty and I have talked, because I want that camera with the officer, if they're going into a house, if they're going somewhere. So, I think the combination could be, you know, a, a well-spent, uh, money well-spent, especially if we're gonna look at more twenty thousand dollar complaints. You say, I mean, it's three complaints, but one was quite extensive.
It's a significant evidentiary piece of technology. It, it gives the officer and the department an extreme advantage, and I don't see it as a crutch, like, um, every major sport now, we have instant replay. Well, there's no way you can't tell me that I can't see what happened in any situation now, because I've got a camera here, I've got a camera in my vehicle. It's very, very, very hard to, to say you can't see what's happening on video. I think, uh, as, uh, Rich points out, with more incidents, gives us a very distinct advantage to be not only highly effective, but very confident and, uh, limit our liability as a law enforcement agency here in Hudson, and I, I think it's gonna be a huge advantage for us.
And, and, I'm sorry, the article I was quoting was, it was actually officers who said that they recognize that in their own performances, that they were becoming more reliant on, on that. So, and I'll just add, you know, I talked with one police chief in a city similar to our size, and he said, "Can't justify the cost." There's about sixty-one percent of, of departments that have it. A lot don't. They get by. I'm just saying, it's not a end-all, be-all, and be prepared for the cost down the road.
Is that, is that city right next to a major, major?
Yes.
Major, okay. So, well, that's fine, but as much as you could say that they may not follow through with the reports, there could be a situation with a break-in where they missed something as they were going through the house, but on video, it's seen, you know, I mean, it could also help solve a crime. You know, I mean, there's, there's arguments both ways, I'll give you that. But I, but, you know, every department asks for equipment to improve their jobs. I can't remember the last time we've given equipment to the police department to, besides the handguns and, you know, seven thousand here, eight thousand there. This is a big chunk of money, but we're going in good, we would be proving this in good faith, that they're going to, it's going to be useful and it's going to improve their jobs, and, you know, I, we have to, you know, start, we have to start looking at, I mean, Rich made the best, one of the best points is that we have a lot more activity happening now in the city. We need to start thinking about that.
Marty, a couple of things. One of the things that we've been talking about, too, is our, how we allocate resources and dollars in assigning department expenses. I think I, I've talked to Mike, and the gentleman that we approve to go full-time uses about seventy-five percent of their time in the police department. Our assistant, what's his name?
Our IT guy?
Brian.
Brian.
Excuse me, Brian spends about seventy-five percent, and this will increase his time there significantly. And so, do you have room in your budget, in the operating budget, if we decide that we're going to start allocating his salary to you, where would you cut in order to have that?
Right now, the way our budgets are set up, the only place I would be able to cut would be personnel.
Okay.
Because I don't, my operating budgets are tight.
Right.
The last couple of years, that's the way they've been operating.
And this will make it probably tighter. The second question that I have is, and I think I talked to you earlier about this, down the road, what other major capital expense would you have in the next two to three years, or in the next year to four years, that you may, that may be coming down the pipe, that we don't, we're not aware of right now?
Currently, our radio system is probably going to have to get, especially our portables, they're beginning to, to break down more regularly. We're spending more time and costs in shipping them out, getting them repaired and bringing them back. They're going on the ten to twelve-year range, so they're starting to become a little bit obsolete. And we've been buying them at, at one point piecemeal, six here, six then. So, that would probably be something in the next year or two, I'd be coming back to City Council saying, you know, we're going to have to invest in that. Not our mobile systems and our squads.
Uh huh.
I'm looking more towards portables.
When we came up with this expense to begin with, we, as part of the five-year planning process, we went through the five years, and this clearly was one of the big-ticket items, but there aren't, there weren't really any other.
That was it.
Yeah, I mean, that was it. So, over the next five years.
That's why I asked, if there was anything else that was missed, apparently this was missed.
Okay, but, fine, but, so you look at, I'm looking at the budget since 2011, and not to pick on Public Works, but this is equipment they needed, correct? You know, they had snow blower attachment for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. They've had a front-end loader for two hundred thousand dollars. They've had a sweeper for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I mean.
What does that have to do with this request?
What I'm saying is, we support the departments when they have, when they, when they have equipment that they feel they need. And we trust that, that, we trust that that's what they're saying they need, and we, we, we try our best to support it. So, this is equipment that the police department has been asking for at least three years now, and.
Longer than that.
Yeah, longer than that, which makes it even worse, in my opinion, you know. So it's like, let's start, let's start supporting at least some of their requests, which is, like you said, it's been longer than that. I don't remember the last time we've given them any large, I mean, I have here.
I don't know, we've replaced at least seven vehicles in the last three years.
Yes, but we, we do that. I mean, vehicles get, and our police have also been the only department who's reduced their vehicles. We've reduced how many vehicles in the last two years, Marty?
Two.
No, how many are we reducing this year? Two, three more? So, five, five, five we've reduced. Any other department reduce vehicles lately?
No, the department has vehicles.
Yes, they all have vehicles. We don't have trucks in Public Works?
Well, I guess they've, I don't, yeah, well, usually when we get a new vehicle, they do eliminate one.
But we actually eliminated, like, they're just replacing, we've eliminated, autonomy in a department who's eliminated, who's reduced. No, we have.
I think that's rather, I think maybe we're, not to ruin your meeting, but I think maybe we've come to a conclusion, I think.
Well, I don't know if that's true. I'd like, I'd like everybody to have a chance.
I'm just saying, I've, I've made my mind up, and we're spinning wheels, is what I'm feeling right now.
I don't feel we are. I think, I think everybody has a right to have their opinion and be able to put information in. And I haven't heard from everybody, so that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to have everybody have their input. Unless nobody wants to, unless they feel it's ready to go.
You got mine.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else they want to add?
I'm making a motion to approve the camera system for a hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Let me ask one question.
Sure, we can, down for a discussion.
Marty, would you see any value in starting out with the?
Body cams.
Body cams first, or, and, you know, instead of introducing the entire system, doing it stepwise, doing that first, getting the guys and gals used to that. Would you see one or the other being more valuable?
If, if we had to, if I had to choose one system, and I know Mary and I will probably disagree on this, I, I would choose the in-car system for the simple fact is, it, it's an or, it automatically comes on when you turn on the lights. So if they go to a domestic call, they turn on their lights and they pull up and the, and the lights are still going, they still have audio, so they can bring audio inside, so they can do it that way. It, it also picks up a lot of the traffic, because a lot of the court, the cases where they're spending a lot of time in court, at least half of them, that I can see from when I was taking a look at our, our records, is on traffic offenses. So, if we're going to have one of the either-or systems, I would push for the in-car camera system.
And that's seventy grand.
Oh, it's seventy-five.
So the rest of the system is twenty-six grand. So, we disagree only because, on a domestic specifically, just as my, being a social worker, a lot of the stuff happens in the house when you're there, too. So it's kind of like, if you're going to do the system, you do it all, and you do it, you have the same software at the same time, and you start it off the right way. That's the way I see it. So.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, geezer.
Next item, discussion and possible action on Public Works Committee recommendation for 2014 street improvement and construction projects. Tom, are you going to do this? Ah, you can start.
Street projects for 2014, I compiled a list of streets based on traffic counts, complaints, where we spent the most time doing maintenance, and also looking at the Whistler Paver Report. The streets that I had listed on the issue sheet are Livingstone from Hagen Industrial Ward Avenue, from Seventeenth Street to the East End, by, up to Associated Bank, Cooley Road, Carmichael Road, Associated Bank, Knollwood Drive, that'd be from Wisconsin to Oakwood Court, and then the three cul-de-sacs associated in the Knollwood Development, Wisconsin Street, Prospect Park to Eleventh Street. Also, leftover projects that we talked about last year were Second and St. Croix intersection, and it was another maintenance, or not a maintenance, but another request to look at Liberty Street, Liberty and Summer Street intersection. Public Works, we discussed these streets and compiled a list of, if I got the issue sheet, to consider Livingstone Street, Ward Avenue.
Are you looking for the?
Can you guys tell me, and I know, I'm sure there's an explanation, but Sixth Street is probably one of the worst streets I've ever driven on, and I went on there today again. So why does Sixth, I, I know the traffic counts aren't high there, but that is a really bad road. I mean, it's like a gravel road, it's so bad. How, how come that doesn't make the list? I'm curious.
I think the biggest thing, John, is, is, and it's, you're absolutely right, is that when we do Sixth Street, it's a.
Total reconstruction, isn't it?
Total reconstruction. It's going to be, you know, one of those streets that we should consider probably for some kind of a grant or thing like that, because when we do that street, it's going to be curb gutter, it's, and then underneath it is eight inches of concrete with a two-inch overlay, so.
Can't we put like an inch of asphalt on it, or a couple inches, and let it?
That's the problem.
How many years are we talking about? I mean, I just, I feel bad for them. It's a bad street.
The unfortunate, yes, we could. You could do, do a one-inch or two-inch overlay, but the concrete is so stressed and.
No, I understand that.
...deteriorating underneath, that it, it's not going to last. It's just that, we're trying to do some patching or spray patching, just to get it by until we can get a total reconstruction. That's my thought on that, but.
Is it even on the five-year radar, I guess is my question. So if it's not, then, I mean, that.
I, I think it has, you know, it's, it's on the radar, but, you know, we're looking at Wisconsin Street for 2015.
Vine Street, we got other, in Wisconsin, I mean, it's, it seems like it's not going to get fixed anytime soon.
Is there a point where it's going to fall into the ground? Because I kind of agree with John on that specific street.
It's really bad.
I think our streets, we're doing great on getting our streets up to date, but when we walked it.
It's awful.
I tripped a few times.
I, I was driving into my truck, and it was still like, wow, this is really bad.
What did we figure, Tom, on that? A million and a half bucks?
I, I don't know. Maybe it's something we should really get a, a cost estimate on, and see where we're at, and see if there are grants available, or, or if we just want to.
There is always more streets that need fixing than we have streets avail, or money available.
That, that I know, and I don't, I don't disagree with that at all, but this, this is kind of out of the ordinary.
It's, it's, it's a little scary.
I don't know another street like it in Hudson, I guess, is what I'm saying, so.
Wisconsin Street's pretty close, and we got that one on the.
That one should be fixed. I agree. So, I don't know, if, you know, what's the cost of a two-inch overlay or one-inch overlay versus total rebuild, you know? And will it get us five or seven years? I, I guess that's my question. And we could take this at another time, I appreciate that, but.
Yep. I don't think the investment would be that good on that, the condition of street. I mean, with the concrete that's falling apart, apart underneath every time there's a joint, and it's so bad and crumbling, that we could put a two-inch lift of asphalt on there, and I don't think it's, you're going to get two years out of it. So.
That's a scary thought, don't you think?
I, I don't personally think, you know, it's going to be a big investment for the city, you know, for a short time. The benefits we'd get from a two-inch overlay won't be that long, I don't, I don't believe.
So, John, I think the answer is, it's on the radar, but I don't know.
The other thing with.
We can choose.
Can you build it sections at a time? I mean.
Absolutely. Maybe you can go from vine to orange, or, you know, from orange to oak or myrtle, or.
Yep.
Absolutely. And maybe if the council, like you said, I propose these, these streets here, if, if the council would like to visit, revisit Sixth Street and consider that, maybe in section. I just think it's, if we do the whole project, it's going to be a lot more than we have in our budget.
I think you worked hard. I think we should continue. I would personally be in favor of continuing forward, but yet.
I would agree.
Going and taking, going out there and figuring out how much it's going to cost for Sixth Street.
That would be some engineering expense.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, but, like, you gotta pay in to fix it, because it's such a bad, it, I agree. I don't like to say our streets are bad, because we do, we, we have good streets, and we work hard to keep them up, but Sixth Street, I agree, is.
We'll talk about it in Public Works.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, does anybody have anything else to add about the?
Do we need to make a motion to approve these streets?
There's a recommendation from the committee there.
I move to approve the streets as listed by committee recommendation for 2000, what is it?
And it's just to go out to bid?
Yep.
Yep, to bid, to go out to bid.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. I think one of the things I'd like to commend you on, Tom, is, is keeping our crack filling and sealing of the roads that we fixed. I think that's really important, that we keep that going, because if we don't keep it up, it'll, we're going to be back in here, and we won't be able to catch up. So, good job on that, and I appreciate the, because that's, that's hard, that's hard to do, too. So.
I think we're going in the right direction.
Yep.
And, you know, if we look at future projects, I know our goal this year was to start earlier. I believe that we're going to be probably two to three months ahead of last year. Looking on to 2015, our biggest project's going to be the Wisconsin Street project. I think probably in a short time, we'll have some, once that gets out for, you know, the design is just about complete, and maybe we can get some firmer estimates as far as what the city's share of that project will be, and then we can see, you know, we'll have a clearer idea what we can afford to do for street projects in 2015. Looking ahead again, if we cared to bid, bid out these projects earlier in January, February, I'll have to start, we'll have to start this whole process probably in July.
Yep.
Last year, we did have our storm, and we worked up until, I think we're finally getting some final numbers now, I think, so we're getting close to that. So hopefully we'll have a better summer, and we can start probably in July.
And one other thing then, too, we'd have to consider the 2015, 16, how many years bonding in 2000, end of 2014, because you've got to have the bonding in place really before you, or know how much you're going to borrow before you decide on what project, so.
So we'll have a clearer idea on Wisconsin Street by next summer, and then we'll have hopefully an idea of how many dollars we can spend, and we can probably start that in July then.
Can we get a map of cities, or the city and roads we did last year and this year, just to kind of get an idea of visually how we're.
It's a good idea. We could actually do a map in, you know, maybe the last few years, three, four years, and show all the improvements that we've done so far.
And maybe what future roads you're looking at within like a couple of years span.
I think one of the things that we, we're learning a lesson, I think when we started on Wisconsin Street, 2009, or eight, that we applied for, nine, maybe nine or 10?
Nine or 10.
Do you remember, Randy?
Long time ago.
Yeah, you got to start.
It was at least 10.
I was under the impression that we would get that street done the next year, and this is 2014, and the project has grown from six-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars to 1.2 million?
It was early 2010, because Dean was still mayor and I was on council.
Okay. So, those, we're doing double sidewalks on both sides with bike paths, and I think we really need to look at those. And I don't think I was aware that it would take four years to do a.
No, no.
Well, a mile stretch of road. I mean, that's, that's what you get when you go to do these projects with the state. Those are the requirements that you have to do. So, I think we should be real careful if we apply for any more grants, because they end up costing us in the time, and I know that it's been really frustrating.
For a grant, I don't know if we've heard from.
I'm aware, I was just thinking, but we haven't heard, and I know we looked in December on their website, and didn't see anything. So, we'll take a look and see where that's.
Have we made a vote yet on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that. New business, discussion and possible action on work order from both engineering services for 2014 street improvement projects.
This is a, this is a work order to do the streets that you just approved for the 2014 street improvement project, and it also includes construction phase for Buckeye Street, First Street to Second Street, and improvements at St. Croix and Second Street intersections. These were two streets that were designed last year in the 2013 street improvement project, but were not awarded as part of the contract. Some of the issues was that, a big part of those street improvements included monies from the Water Department, which they didn't have. And Tom has discussed with the Water Department, and they do have the funds to go forward with the project this year. So we're going to include those two streets on our design. So we have broken it down once again into three sections, a preliminary field investigation, where we go out in the field and look at all the streets and the curb and gutters and pedestrian ramps and, and driveway aprons. And in addition, I included three thousand dollars in here for topographic survey, because I know Tom does have some, he has some concerns about drainage issues on Ward Street. We may need it, we may not need it, but I decided to put it in the budget just in case. And then we have the, the design work on the streets and the construction phase. And I have a preliminary field investigation is hourly, estimated at twelve thousand nine hundred, and like I said, that includes three thousand dollars for the topographic survey if required. The design phase will be billed on a lump sum fee of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred, and construction phase will be billed at our hourly rate estimated at forty-three thousand one hundred.
So Buckeye Street and St. Croix, Buckeye First to Second, and St. Croix and Second are through all the phases except the construction phase. Are they going to be done at the same time?
They'll be done in 2014.
Yeah, but at the same, like, timeframe, like, within this, are they going to be doing them simultaneously, I'm asking?
No, I wouldn't, if they have two crews going, they could be, but I, we haven't seen two crews going.
Same bid package.
Yes.
But done in separate weeks, not.
Probably so, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that was a, a hope-not question.
Because of the conflict on two, two parts of Second Street.
Yeah, it would be very bad.
And I can write that into the, the schedule and the phasing, too, that they have to have one street done before they start another street.
I just think it would be bad to, to clog it up on both ends.
So Karen, just a question on the design phase, and why that's billed as a lump sum?
That's billed as a lump sum because we're easy, we can predict how many sheets we have, and we know what we're doing. Where in regards to being out in the field, preliminary field or construction phase, when you're out in the field, you never know what else can happen, and that's why we do it hourly estimated at.
I'll move.
Questions?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second? What hourly rate are you, is there a second? Sorry, I didn't get a second.
Second.
Okay. What kind of hourly rate do we, are we, is this our contract rate?
It's our contract rate from when we became engineers in 2010?
Ten, ten. Okay, thank you. Any questions or? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 12B, discussion, possible action on Resolution One, 2014, disallowance to claim a Gary and Cheryl at home. Resolution one dash fourteen, letter from EMC Insurance Company, I think you've viewed that.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Roll call.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Haggert?
Yes.
T. Winko?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Move to deny.
Okay.
Uh, claim, resolution, what is it, declaimed or to resolution? Adopt resolution. Move to adopt resolution number one through fourteen, I'm like, that wasn't sounding right, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be the resolution approving submission of petition to Government Accounting Board to use paper ballots for February 18th spring primary. Devin, do you have your...
Um, there will be a small portion of the city, about half of District Three and about half of District Four plus District Six, that will be voting for a county board race. So, rather than the expense of programming all the cars and running the machines, we still will have the hand, the edge machine, the further handicapped, but it'll just save us in the county the cost of the paper, of the programming and everything, so we'll just use paper ballots, we don't anticipate a, a big turnout.
We have to...
But we're hoping.
We're hoping a big turnout, but history tells us otherwise, but this will, that saves us costs, and, and we will have information on the website as to which areas of those two districts are involved, so...
I'm moving to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Haggert?
Yes.
T. Winko?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Move to approve resolution number two dash fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12D, discussion, possible action on snow power event parking and violation tickets. Chief Jensen, I think this is a request from a council person, I need...
Yes.
Yep.
Now, this was, I was asked to break forward some numbers in regards to snow plowing events. Since it began in November, we've had one snow plowing event that's been called, and that was on December 5th. During that event, we issued twenty-one citations. Since that time, since December 5th through, just after I got the email when I did the numbers, we had what we call nine twenty-four-hour parking violation citations that were issued. Of those nine, we towed six of those vehicles. There was a significant snowfall which fell on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. I talked to Tom Zulli, he was out that day as I was, and it was decided, because it was a holiday, we decided not to implement a snow plowing event, so we did not issue any parking tickets at that time.
Again, for people that were coming and visiting and...
Correct.
Overnight guests, and...
Thank you very much.
But, Tom, let's talk about that. Can, can we just, you know, if, if we're gonna send the plows out, and we got two inches of snow, we'd like to have people off the street, would that be a fair statement?
That was the plan.
Okay, so, from what I'm hearing from Chief Jensen, if, if you don't declare it as an emergency event, he's not gonna issue tickets, is that correct, Marty?
Well, and it's not an, we don't call an emergency.
I know, but I mean, a snow event.
Snow event, correct.
We're calling it a snow event, right?
And it's two inches, right?
Right. And unfortunately, this year, we've, I think we've had two events, two snow, snowfalls that were two inches or more.
Right.
Only two.
Yep.
Seems like a lot more, doesn't it?
Seems like, but it was, they're always less than that, has been the problem. One of them was on Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve into Christmas Day. Okay, so, I, I think the issue comes in, is if we get two inches of snow, we'd sure like, we, we need those cars off the street so we can plow.
And, right, and as soon as I get the word from Tom, we send the notice out, and it's an alert on the webpage, and just to remind citizens that if they have, they should sign up for that notification on the city's website, so that they immediately will get an email or a text or however they set it up, to tell them, you need to get your car off, so we really encourage people to do that.
Do we have to, this is...
I'm asking a question, so is a holiday an exception, and...
Apparently it was, and that was a call that they made.
Yeah, 'cause sorta had about ten cars still at my house.
It's not a policy that the holiday is exception, but yeah, they can make the call, but you could do like a courtesy ticket so they know for the next time, you know?
We could.
Like we do in the month of December, I think we should still put courtesy tickets out.
He would be putting down, he declared a snow plowing event, but he didn't want me to ticket, so we could've written out.
Yeah, courtesy tickets would be...
Courtesy tickets, I hear in my...